Back to order. Thank y'all for allowing us to take a break. Consent agenda is next on the, on the agenda that we need to consider approving in the minutes from the October eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Regular meeting commissioners have had a chance to review those, are there any corrections or changes? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
Motion.
There's a motion and a second Joe. If nobody else has a correction or change to note, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sound, alright. We have nothing under old business for this meeting, I think we will for the next meeting though. So we'll move on to new business, consider funding requests, page eleven through fifteen commissioners in your packet. And we'll ask Ms. Karen to give us a rundown of those items.
Okay, the first one is the Andalucia Chamber of Commerce sponsorship. We usually sponsor an item for Candyland, Christmas in Candyland. And they had sent out the paperwork and I thought we'd go ahead and try to present it early and see if y'all would like to go ahead and make a consideration.
Do you recall what we did previously on it?
I do not, I've still looking up.
Last year we did the cottage and the year before, I believe we did one of the, it was a five hundred to a thousand dollar something, but I can't remember exactly.
Okay, so there's several areas there, are there others to consider at the same time or you'll take them one by one?
One by one.
Alright.
I'll make a motion that we sponsor Christmas in Candyland. Not to say one thousand dollars.
Okay, there's not a thousand dollar sponsorship, you want to just, the five or two of the five hundred dollars, what do you have in mind?
I'd say two of the five hundred dollar ones.
Okay, there's a motion, somebody else have a thought on there, or second to the motion?
I'll say.
Alright. Comments, questions?
Okay.
Alright, if there are none, we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sound. Motion carries so two, five hundred dollar sponsorships, thousand dollars total. And are we reviewing all of these on that request or just that for the moment?
Well, if y'all wanted to go ahead, but usually we just do that.
Okay. Unless somebody else wants to pick up on these other opportunities, we'll turn on to the next one, what's next?
What, uh, the January?
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do it a little later.
I'm thinking, nevermind.
Alright, that's alright. So the next one is what forestry commission?
The Alvin Forestry Commission, we had a request um, for help with sponsorship of a vehicle for them. It's on page thirteen of your papers.
I think maybe some of the commissioners have had conversations with the forestry about this, do you have any? Quick comments, thoughts on this one? Look at. Why don't you come on up and we'll ask you to address.
Thank y'all for giving questions.
Yeah, alright. Alright.
Thank y'all for considering key statements with Alvin Forestry Commission. Forestry specialists here, our commissioners work similar to how y'all work for the, you know, for the county. They've set aside certain dollars this year for matching funds from counties because traditionally, some of the counties in the state would have to out. Pike County, Montgomery County, uh, Crenshaw County gives a little bit every year. But um, our budget from the state general fund has been cut fifty seven percent over the last two years. So when you're cut fifty seven percent, things start hurting. And we're funded primarily from the timber service tax, which by the way, has not increased since nineteen sixty eight. But since nineteen sixty eight, the price of vehicles, bulldozers, equipment, even your employee costs is skyrocketing. So, uh, but we do a lot of things for the county, not just the tree police as a lot of people think of us. Uh, we fight fires when there's drought, I mean, we've been fighting a lot of fires and right now, the largest fire in the state for the year has been here in Kennedy County. Uh, right side of Lockhart, we were on that fire for six days, you know, totaling over six hundred and fifty acres. So, what we do is school programs. I did the, we took our equipment and did the cross-country track for the school board, um, you know, when we're not fighting fires, we're doing other things. With Sisland owners for burning, fire prevention programs. And then we're also over, um, all of the management programs, B and P programs, which Mr. uh, Rawls will be very familiar with and they were talking about pipes and stuff and, you know, waterways, so.
Keith, uh, you mentioned the work that you did with the school board.
Yes.
Were they, were they able to contribute some toward that?
No, not at the time, it was not budgeted for the cross-country course, that's at time, due to other funding and you understand how things go on that. Um, so it was, it was just our time and our cost to it.
I would love for them to look at maybe joining with us a little bit on the contribution and we'll talk to them about that. Commissioners, questions for Keith?
Alright, this amount that you have on here.
Yes.
Is that what? Y'all gonna match or is that what?
Right, that's a fifty fifty match.
So any contributions you get, y'all match this amount?
On, on that, yes sir, on that truck.
Would anybody that makes a contribution besides us or just us?
Right, if, if there was multiple funding, um, and one of the counties, I actually found out the county fire association is coming up with five thousand dollars toward it in the county commission, additional amount. But, you know, um, our fire association doesn't exactly have a pool quite that high to, you know, to be donating that much money, so.
I was wondering if you, you know, if we just done a portion or some amount, would that help or was that, you expecting this amount?
To be honest, right now, that is the amount that was earmarked, um, now, if there was any kind of contributions like, uh, Ms. White was talking about. You know, with the school board, if y'all came together to equal the total amount, but we would have to have that total, you know, the twenty thousand dollars across, not quite full twenty.
Sixteen four eighty nine is the amount.
Sixteen four eighty nine.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and there, that was just what they've set aside and they already had earmarked according to their rules.
And I'll remind y'all, we did not budget that in ours because we didn't know where it, uh.
And, and I understand and we were late coming to the table.
Right, and we talked a little bit about that and of course, we've had requests from some of our, you know, some of our other internal departments, them calling out some county departments, you know, requesting a little more than what we had budgeted them for, so it's kinda gonna. Go out and tighten our bell a little bit. If we could just do something, you know.
But maybe with some additional.
Maybe not this amount, but.
And, and if y'all would like to table it till the next meeting and we can talk to the school board and I'll see if they can do something to help, to be honest, I don't know where they're at, I haven't spoken to them about it yet, so.
But we, uh.
Here's a couple of questions, have, have you guys talked to any of the local fire departments, I know y'all work in conjunction with them and we do have a fire tax that's already getting paid.
Right.
Are any of those willing to help out?
I have not, because they meet, um, uh, bi-monthly, I guess it is, every month, they don't meet again until November.
They all meet on the same month.
This came to my, the day I got the paperwork, I went to Karen with it, so, I mean, it was, it's been kinda rolling along a little bit fast and like I said, I know we were a little late coming to the table on the budget request.
Seems like we have twenty five or so fire departments, right?
We do, and I'm being honest though, that's their only source of income and the cost of just turn out here alone, I mean, you're looking at almost two thousand dollars per person just for, turn out here for a volunteer firefighter. And you know, that forty thousand goes pretty quick when you start doing that and paying liability insurance and, and insurance on your equipment and buildings, I know most of them, there's some that do have.
Some that, that are.
Some good amounts, but there's some that struggling pretty hard.
What about soil and water, have they, you talked with them?
Uh, no sir, uh, but.
I do know they have some fundings for stuff.
We, we do and I'm not, everything with soil and water is handled through our liaison at the state level, so I'm assuming, I personally have not talked to them, I assume they have at that level and it didn't work out.
Our locals here, I, you know.
You serve on that much? Do you serve on the?
No, I don't.
The district, do we have any commissioners on that?
But again, the, the truck will be used for multiple years, give you an idea of the two trucks we're driving, one's a two thousand and eight and the other's a two thousand and four, so we don't get rid of them real quick. And, uh, it would be used in the county for a lot of things.
Yeah.
But let, wanna at least talk to the school board, see if they could join us and see if we can come up with a partnership with them for the next meeting to consider, is that okay?
Yes sir.
Alright.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate you coming and, uh, sorry there.
Any more questions?
I, I think we're good, right now. Let, let's see, I'll talk directly to them and see if they have what looks, alright? What else? Is that all?
Yes.
Alright, those were the funding items, thank y'all for considering those, we'll make sure we bring that back for the next meeting. Uh, next page sixteen twenty one is consider, uh, declaring some surplus items.
Yes, this is for the sheriff's department, I believe he wants to come up and kind of.
Okay.
Walk you through his spreadsheet here, it's color coordinated and very easy to follow.
Yes, we color coordinated. Okay, as we go on page one, uh, you'll notice that, uh, asset, uh, numbers, uh, one hundred, I'm just gonna give you the last, uh. Four digits of the van, I suppose. We got a two thousand and twelve Tahoe, uh, twenty three eighty three. We're still driving it, but I'd like to go ahead and prepare it to be surplus. Uh, we also have a twenty twelve Tahoe, it's twenty three seventy one, it's, it needs to be surplus. We have a thirteen Tahoe, which is twenty sixty nine, that needs to be surplus. Uh, twenty seventy, which is a thirteen, that needs to be surplus. Uh, twenty one zero nine, which is a thirteen, that needs to be surplus. Let's say twenty thirteen model, twenty one twenty two, that needs to be surplus. Let's see, this is gonna be. One three three three, which is a twenty thirteen model that needs to be surplus. And a, the twenty seventy I've already called, but it's on my sheet twice, it needs to be surplus. Uh, these are vehicles that we've, we've, we've actually pulled them off the road except for one of them, uh, what they were replaced with some Crown Vics that we purchased, uh, back several months ago. They're high mileage and it's time for them to be retired. Uh, also, uh, if we keep flipping on, there is, uh. So we have an Expedition, a two thousand and sixteen, it's already been surplus, but it's, it was surplus for trade-in. To let you guys know, we, we ordered three vehicles from, uh, from Andalucia Ford, there, I think two of them's here, we're waiting for the other one, so. We have two vehicles, we know that we can trade in, that we've already, uh, spoke about and that was this, uh, twenty sixteen Expedition and a, uh, uh, twenty seventeen Supercru, uh, Ford F- one fifty. Also, uh, we, 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 we would like to trade in a, uh, two thousand and nineteen. Ford Expedition that we have, that's gonna be an extra vehicle. We're losing one of our investigators and we have something else for another one to drive, so this one here would help cut down the cost on some of these newer vehicles. And open it up for some, uh, open up some, some more patrol vehicles that we could buy later.
Is that twenty nineteen Expedition one that you bought with your law enforcement funds?
Yes, bought with law enforcement funds, I, I'm not really concerned which one it is, but I'm just gonna s, uh, uh, pick out the one, uh, uh. That ends with six three five two, um, which is twenty nineteen Ford Expedition and I'd, I'd like to trade it in as well. It was bought with law enforcement funds and it's just, we're not gonna be needing it as much. Also, uh. If we skip on down, we have a two thousand and six Crown Victoria that's being used at the courthouse right now, uh, ending van is three two seven one. Would like to surplus that as well and I'll find something to replace them with.
So the ones that you're asking us to surplus are ready to come off today? They can all be parked or they already are parked?
They can all be parked, uh, with the exception of that last one, that, that Crown Vic, he still drives it and the very first one. Uh, the very first one was, uh, uh, Mr. Viger's still driving it, but I'll have something to replace them with as soon as we can get these things.
Because we wanna remove them from insurance and things like that, so, uh.
Right.
So the first and last one, he said.
Right, the first one was, was, uh.
At a later date.
At, at a later date.
Do you wanna set a date on that, do you, I mean, do you know how quickly you're gonna replace it?
It's kinda hard to tell, I need to go see what they got up at, uh, eight decade to replace it with.
Okay.
Uh, but within the next couple of three weeks anyway, I'll get it to Montgomery, uh, actually, uh, next week and see what they have.
Sheriff, that'd still leave you with a couple of spares, so.
That leaves me with a couple of spares.
Why don't we, why don't we just leave that first and last one for, uh, just a, a later action, that way we won't accidentally terminate insurance or something on it.
Sure.
And then, but go ahead and consider approval, uh, declaring all the other items mentioned surplus, so we can begin the process of, of, uh, liquidating that fleet. Uh, you mentioned one was a trade-in.
Well, actually, there, actually, there's three of them that we're wanting to trade in and we're getting three replacements as well.
As long as, as long as it's law enforcement funds.
It's law enforcement funds, all three of them, uh, and.
You don't want to sell them on the fair market value, you don't think they'd be a, bring more value, you think it's better to trade?
I don't, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know if they would or not. I would love to sell them at fair market value, but everything has to go through gov deals.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Which we can move that quickly though, I mean, it's an option.
You can put limits on it, you can have it where it has to say.
Yeah, put a, set a reserve on it or a bond or. And we could, I mean.
What, what do you guys think, I, I don't have a problem putting them on gov deals.
Well, I don't have a problem with, with selling them on bids, I mean, I don't think that we.
That's our normal procedure, the trade-in's unusual unless you just had some reason to do that.
I don't really have a reason to trade in.
If it was already factored into your purchase price or something on.
Can, can we not just bid them off ourselves?
I don't think that's a good idea.
We don't have, we can, but we don't, we're not set up to do it, I'm afraid we wouldn't do the advertising and stuff that we need to, I mean, we just, if you want to, we can pursue.
No, I was just thinking, you know, why, why we could.
We could set, we, what we could do, we could figure out what the trade-in value is worth on them and set that as our limit, as the min, that's what we'll minimi, min, minimum.
That's right.
Minimumally take.
Yeah.
And, uh, anything over that'll just be going to the purchase price of the other vehicles.
So we'd, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, declare the items identified as, as surplus. To be sold at auction with a reserve established on the three that you've identified as possibly being trade-in.
Yes.
Let the trade-in value be the reserve, okay?
What kinda timeframe we're gonna be doing with this sheriff, 'cause we don't wanna string this out over.
Actually, it needs to move pretty quick, 'cause I believe these three vehicles, I know two vehicles that I ordered are already in and the other one hadn't quite made it yet, but when they all get here, we're gonna need to. I need to go write them a check and.
And then the first and last one that you mentioned, we'll, we'll just consider a surplus on those when we know that we're ready.
We can do that later, that'll be fine.
I was just thinking if it's gonna take a month to get this deal on gov deals, you know, that.
Well, Kent does it pretty quickly, it's usually, he's waiting on the departments to tell him he's ready, because all he can do is get, get.
Okay, so if we can do it and put them out there for a couple of weeks.
I can have, I can have the pictures and all and the descriptions done, if not today, tomorrow, and, uh, give them to them and we can get this ball rolling.
Alright.
Cause you, one thing about gov deals, like it's an auction site, you can say when it starts and you can say when it ends.
That's what I think, I'm, I'm good with a short term on them, so we can get moving.
Yeah, so is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to go ahead and list those with a, with a, uh, minimum bid on gov deals to, uh, be done in a timely manner.
And that's the three that were.
Three that he would consider trade in.
Elaborate and the others, just list them and.
I would include the, in that motion to declare all these other surplus.
Alright, so a second? Second, Kevin, questions, anything we need to clarify?
As long as, yeah, the, the, uh, everything's fine with gov deals and we could never trade anything unless it was bought with law enforcement funds, as long as we're all clear on that, we're good. Um, he does have a second item after y'all get through this, so.
Alright, all in favor say aye. Oppose same sound, alright, second item.
Uh, a traded vehicle, uh, to Lockhart.
Right, uh, trying to contact with Lockhart is needing a patrol car. Uh, some of these that we pulled off for surplus, they're, they're, they're better than what Lockhart has. Uh, my suggestion would be, uh, we could trade with Lockhart. They have, uh, they have a Crown Vic that, that's not being, what, what's not what they want and if they're willing to trade, uh, patrol car for patrol car, I think that would be a good idea. We can take that Crown Vic, I don't think it has a lot of mileage on it, uh, and we can take it, let our mechanic go through it and everything, we could use it as a school resource officer.
And the information I got on it last week from your office was, uh, I think it's gonna be an O eight Crown Vic, van number ending five two four four, and that they were wanting to get your two thousand and thirteen Chevy Tahoe, ending with six nine six eight.
Okay.
Like that's what your chief deputy brought.
That's fine.
And that's an even trade?
I think it's an even trade, the only thing we'll have to do is swap radios out in it and that's it. Uh, the Crown Vic, uh, platform is a, a very reliable platform, uh, and to me, there, the, there's, parts are plenty and they're easy to work on and. It'll be helping out Lockhart.
Okay.
Lockhart struggles, so.
So y'all hear the sheriff's request, uh, the information that's provided, you have thoughts on that or will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the swap of vehicles with the town of Lockhart.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, any other questions on it, all minds are clear, we'll vote, all in favor say aye. Oppose same sound, alright, that's Karen, so that's your word with Karen on that.
And his last item is purchasing of new trucks, he had just asked y'all to consider, uh, lease or even if we do purchase, I think he's got.
That's right, I, I, I wanted to speak with you guys about, uh, either a purchase or a lease option. The biggest problem we have with patrol cars is maintenance, when they hit a certain mileage, they start tearing up and you start having to put transmissions and motors and things like that. And it takes our maintenance bill that is shoots, it's skyrocketing. There, there's one or two things we can do, we can lease these, these, these vehicles, uh, and when they start giving us problems, it would be covered under the lease. Or we could start selling them and, and surplusing them faster, you know, uh, uh, I've never, I, the patrol cars that I've had over the years, once they hit around eighty to a hundred thousand miles. That's, that's when they start giving problems, patrol car is a, it's a constantly used item, you know, they don't set idle very long. Uh, I'm just figuring out ways that we could possibly save on our, on our bills and everything, I think, I think the lease is a good option. Uh, the way these leases are set up, there is no mileage restriction on it, uh, and you can set it up for three or four-year leases at a certain price, a fixed price, and you get that many vehicles. I was, just, I got an example here from Stivers. And this is for, uh, uh. Uh, let me see, I think I, I think this is eight, this is eight, uh, patrol cars or patrol trucks. And the cost of eight units is three hundred and forty nine thousand dollars and let's just say three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, those same eight units would cost us, uh, without the lease would cost us a similar price, but we have to worry about that, that warranty, this warranty is a hundred and fifty thousand mile warranty, bumper and bumper on these vehicles. Uh, it's still the same amount each year.
Is that the annual lease?
That's, that's the annual lease.
About forty five, forty four hundred dollars per unit.
About.
Forty four thousand.
I guess, I guess you're right, it turned out, it turned out to be, actually, I gave y'all a copy of.
Yes, forty three thousand two hundred dollars per unit.
Right.
Forty three hundred.
That's how much, that's how much each unit costs.
Total cost, I would like.
Yeah.
Well, uh, and, and, well, we, we have occasionally leased equipment, but we're doing it on a cost to operate, if that lease provides a lower cost to operate than a purchase outright and then a sale and gaining.
Right.
Uh, you know, some money at the sale, then, then we would certainly consider a lease, but it's strictly on a. Sometimes it's better in lease, we have some heavy equipment leased right now, but it's been rare, that's one of a, a very rare occurrence that we've done that, but it may be different in these, we need to look at them.
Well, the thing with, with these leases, the thing about when they change cars, they change the equipment that goes in them. You know, you can't take a Crown Vic cage and put in a Tahoe, or you can't put a Tahoe cage in a Ford truck, so what happens is that, when you, when you buy new cars. The, the body style changes the next year, you're stuck with all this equipment and you can't use it. Well, this lease will get us this first bit of equipment on a platform that's gonna be there, these, these Ford trucks, they're, they're not gonna be changing anytime soon.
So even if we buy, we wanna go to those trucks then?
Well, if, if, if that's, if that be the case, we can go with the trucks, I don't care if we go with a car, truck, i- i- if. Man, if bicycles would work fine, it'd be fine with me, I just wanna make sure people get patrol.
You said one time that we could buy them back for a dollar.
Yes, at the end of the four-year period, you have an option, you can buy them all for a dollar each, or you can turn them in and trade them in on more.
So it's really a financing lease, it's really the way, so it's really the cost of your money is, we can get right down to it.
But we may not be able to afford eight more in the time the lease runs out.
Yeah, but we might could do it on a, on a staggering basis and get a couple and a couple or two or three.
Already budgeted with the money to buy.
What I'd like to do is do an analysis and, uh, and see what the cost to operate for that period of time is and let's discuss that, uh, versus a purchase.
I think we had that. I believe those trucks are like twenty five thousand dollars.
Base price for a truck is twenty four thousand nine hundred and thirty six dollars.
And it's about eleven thousand, I think you gave us a sheet to do everything, but now these, did these include that, uh, that on its lease, they don't have the dual stalkers, did it?
Actually, this lease here that I'm looking at Stivers, also, I give this to Jay Spurlet, S and P Communications, they have it as well. This does include radars and printers, all I have to do is put my radio in my computer in them, it comes with all the mounts and everything. Uh, r- a radar and, and these are stalker dual radars, these are at the top of the line, but they're good, uh, the radar's expensive, that's two thousand dollars for a radar.
Right, I, I do see that now, it's a stalker two, dual, front and rear.
First, front and rear, it's just.
And that's the same thing that we got from, uh, Berlin, I believe, S and P, the same price.
And the, and the actual dressed out price is what?
Out the door, forty three thousand seven hundred and thirty six dollars, and all I'd have to do is put my radio in it and the decals on it.
If you bought it.
That's if I bought it at Stivers.
If you bought it instead of leasing though, if you bought it and financed, what would that cost be?
It'll cost us, uh.
We don't know exactly.
Yeah, it'll cost us.
Well, I put that.
It cost us thirty six thousand dollars.
Plus the cost of the money.
Yeah, the, the lease, the lease is thirty six thousand dollars, whereas the, the buyout is forty three thousand, save a little bit of money by spreading it out per vehicle.
That's where my point would, if you could buy it back and it, it had any value.
It's a buck.
You know, you would, if it's worth seven, eight thousand dollars, we're gonna about be even, but our.
Or maybe, or you know, even if you decided.
Thirty six.
That don't include tires.
Decide not, but let's just say you didn't want to buy it back, you trade them in on the next set that you get.
Five thousand dollars for maintenance.
And then they give you traded value for them.
They don't, they don't do, they don't do a tire program, dude.
But, what now?
A tire program.
But on the, on the purchase price, Sheriff, it would be about thirty six thousand to buy that truck, that would, it, it, the cost versus, uh, purchase versus lease. The, uh, with a thirty six thousand dollar purchase price and a twenty, it's a forty four thousand roughly, lease, that's gonna give us six thousand dollars to do maintenance on that truck in four years. And we would own it and if it started to develop a problem, then we make a trade, the cost of the money is not, I mean, it's six thousand, six thousand dollars on forty thousand dollars is a lot of cost of money to me.
It's eight thousand. And forty four to thirty six, is that what?
Right.
Okay.
I'm just saying that that would give us, I'm saying that would give, uh, five thousand dollars additional per unit to put tires and whatever else needs to be put.
Listen, we just, we just approved, uh, surplusing seven vehicles, plus two more that we're waiting to approve, that's nine, so I'm thinking with that many surplus vehicles on hand, we must have been replacing them. And we must have somewhere close to seven or eight or nine relatively new vehicles in our fleet.
We've got some pretty decent vehicles, but I bought a bunch of them.
Is this action needed today or is this something for, for us to consider or looking?
This is something for us to consider.
Looking forward, okay.
Right, I don't have to go buy these vehicles today.
Our norm has been to purchase three in a year, most many years, and then law enforcement pick up two or three, so try to have maybe five rotating three new ones. And we, again, we have seven plus two, we have nine that we're surplusing, so we have nine, I know we have nine fairly new items in the fleet.
Right, and we do have some, we do have some vehicles that are on the road.
Yeah.
That the mileage is getting there, it's getting, it's getting so replaced, so.
So I would, I would like for us to look at this, a little later, we'll take this good information to, to make our analysis and determine what we wanna do. But I was afraid we were pushing to make a purchase the day of eight vehicles, or a lease of eight vehicles. Okay, I got it. Anybody else have any questions on this item?
But I will mention this, Jim. It takes forever to get these vehicles in, so, you know, we, we gotta be able to look down the road, I mean, these, these ones that I ordered, I, I've had them ordered four months. And it just takes a while to get them.
That's kind of the one, about four to five months.
Four to five months.
Same amount we got coming in now, three.
What's that?
Three.
I got three trucks coming.
Three, that's well done.
Alright, anything else for the sheriff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we appreciate it, we'll, we'll be there.
The next item under that for the vehicle and equipment is, um, we had. The next item under that for the vehicle and equipment is, um, we had recently gotten back from the state. A pickup truck that was used for the solid waste program. It's a two thousand and ten Chevy Silverado, uh, end event with VIN twenty-one, twenty-three. And, uh, we need to assign it to a department. I would recommend going to maintenance since they have, um, only two trucks in that department and several guys. And they're pulled from the courthouse to here to jail to the arena, um, but if y'all would make that designation to Sheldon's choice.
It's just a regular cab truck with how many miles?
Uh.
We don't know.
Yeah, many miles on it, yeah.
No. They might not have put them on that. I didn't get the sheet.
I don't see it. I had one of the guys from the shop go and pick it up for me and it's, I haven't even actually laid eyes on it to see.
Think it had that many miles, didn't it?
So the recommendation is to sh- uh, trans- assign this to the, uh, maintenance department. Our motion?
Second.
Second, questions on it or other ideas? Alright, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
Alright.
That'll be assigned to the maintenance department. What else? Under purchase and surplus and stuff, alright? Next item is, uh, consider approval for laid back subdivision.
Do we not have something on here from engineers on this side? We got some surplus stuff in engineers' office?
Yes, he's got some of it, Steve.
I'm in the same boat as the sheriff on this, um. We're at, we have, uh, six, uh, Mack dump trucks that we purchased. They're a little over, like, getting close to two years of age. And, uh, I wanna surplus those for the spring sale, to be sold there at Wood Auction for their spring sale.
Do you have a guarantee on them or not yet?
Tentatively, I've got a, yeah. We, we've got it budged. We've got the numbers.
So we just, I mean, sometimes the market's good and are we, is it okay right now?
They still think it's gonna be strong, yes. Still gonna be strong.
Wanna make sure that that works and we don't get.
But it's, it's the six that you see here and also, but that's, I need to get that squared away so we can look at the next item that I have as far as.
Oh, page we're looking at?
Twenty-one.
Okay, sorry.
But it takes about us, it takes us about six months to get these trucks in.
So do we already have replacement trucks in hand or are you trying?
No, I'm, I gotta, that's, that's my next item after we get through this, so.
You wanna clear the surplus and then purchase?
I'm gonna make a motion that we declare these trucks surplus.
I'll say.
Motion in second. Questions?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make up a good move. Do you know about what range the, uh, guarantee's gonna be in ballpark?
It's one thirty-ish, I believe. I don't have a, I mean, we, we, it's budgeted with our, it's in our budget.
Alright, there's a motion in second. If there's nothing else, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Alright, that's approved.
If we could do all of this, do this more often, that would be nice.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at replacing, um, those six with five on the drop truck with our FEMA work running down. I think we've gave much thought into, to maybe losing a truck and I think it'll be best, we're gonna replace those six with, with just five. And I wanna get, if I get the approval from commission to, to get that off our, our joint bid, our ACCA joint bid. Cause I need to order those trucks to, to, to have them here before the s- spring sale there, uh, Wood Auction.
And what's the price per truck?
Uh, roughly about a hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars.
With the bed added, that's the bed and truck, right?
That's the bed and truck, yes. It'll be elliptical bed and the, uh, it'll be the, the, um, the truck chassis coming from Next Tran. Uh, it'd be about a four hundred and fifty-five horse motor with, um, a six speed automatic and with elliptical body on it, so.
Uh, the ones we're selling, you said, you think they'll bring one thirty?
I'm, 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 you know, home of that, but it's, it's close to that range, yes.
Is that net or is that the gross?
That's gross.
So we're looking at?
I can get that. I mean, but it's, it's.
You looking at one twenty?
Somewhere around there. So you're looking at about a thousand dollars a month on and operate those trucks?
Yeah, we're, yes, it's been a good deal.
They may bring strong. They may be strong with the, with the gas tax money and the road construction coming out. They may be strong, as Tony will say. I looked.
Okay.
Our fifteen truck that we had brought eighty, right at eighty thousand dollars, our, our tractor rig, so it, it sold very well.
So you've heard the request to approve ordering five two thousand twenty Mack trucks from Next Tran. Is there a motion? Tony moves that we approve that.
Second.
Can it?
Can it? Questions? All in favor of say aye? Opposed, same side. Alright. Any other equipment that we need to look at? Was that it? That's all yours?
Where we at on the graders? How many, how much more time we got on that?
We still got a few more years on those. We're still looking good. We're still looking good.
We done a five year?
Yes, five year.
That's right.
Okay.
We about two, three years in.
Alright, so then let's move on to item D, under new business, uh, laid back subdivision.
Uh, the subdivision, okay.
Alright, go ahead, Lynn.
Uh, this is the subdivision there by the Kubota dealership. They're just taking and, and breaking out two lots with that. I've met, I've made all the advertisements for it and all the, everything's met the appro- of, the commission's standards for the subdivision, so.
So they've, they've met all the requirements. It's strictly us approving the final approval on the subdivision. So is there a motion to give final approval on laid back subdivision?
Make a motion.
Second on that.
Second.
Alright, motion in second. If you have questions for Lynn on this? Uh, that'll be recorded and on the plat and stuff, so all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Alright, that's approved. Next item is E, consider approval to solicit bids. It's on page twenty-seven in your package, Commissioner. Karen, you wanna?
This is engineer's office as well. The one thing that I was thinking was the GPS system for surveying, uh, he wants to advertise the bids for that.
And this'll, this will help, um, and I, I think, I've showed most of the guys, we had one alone. Um, this past summer, we did a lot of this survey and, and, uh, it'll basically cut out two people out of our, my survey careers. It's, it can be a one man machine out there doing the work. And, uh, with the one oh seven job coming up and, and future work, with our gas tax money and other avenues we're looking at maybe paving. It'll, it'll definitely be an asset for our, our department, for sure, so.
So there's requests that we approve.
Soliciting bids.
Soliciting bids on the GPS system, global position system. Motion is our second.
Second.
The motion in second. You have questions on it?
No.
If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Alright.
And the next bids for the, uh, for the sand blasting, sand, water and soda blast and priming painting of the bridge structures.
And this initially was fraud for the, for the Dunn's Bridge. With Lake Bend down, we were having to, to get that pretty quick. Um, but while we're doing it, while the, and it's, it's a specialty type contract, we will make sure while they're here. To get a better price for maybe doing some other maintenance, cause we do have two hundred and eighty-four bridges that need, uh, maintenance as well and, uh.
So are you gonna, are you inviting bids on the package or are you gonna invite them on the individual and, and consider individual?
We can ride either way. Um, we'll do it both and, and, well, we can pull one out. The main thing is the Dunn's Bridge. We got the, the Gant Relativ Highway, the bridge over Pat Slaggy and, uh, the Brooklyn Road and the one on Canal Road four over Yellow River. We got some bearing, pad issues that we need to address.
So related, related projects that are already approved and moving forward. So is there a motion to, uh, solicit bids on these four s- four structures? Uh, either together or individually, be able to consider it either way?
I make the.
Motion is our second?
Second.
Motion in second. Anybody have questions? All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
Gotta be done.
Alright. Anything else, Lynn?
That's it for me.
Page twenty-eight, thirty-one, commissioners, you have a request for, uh, consideration of a retail beer license. At Brumeyer's one, Brumeyer's one station LLC, Highway one thirty-seven, Wing, Alabama. It's a currently licensed location that is, uh, shifting to a new owner. New owners and, um, so you, you see the paperwork on that? Maybe you've had a chance to consider that. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I've spoken with the people there and it's, it's just changing ownership, changing license, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, it is an off premises license, uh, so purchase there and take away. Motion by Tony.
My second.
Second call. Anybody have questions on it? All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Approve, uh, opposed, same side. That's approved, alright. And, uh, board vacancies on page thirty-two. Um, county has an industrial development board, our authority. And, uh, one of the members serving there, Greg Henderson, has, uh, submitted a letter of resigning from that position. But we don't have any pending action before that board at this moment, but certainly need to keep it primed and ready. And, uh, so making you aware of that si- uh, seat that's open. Some of you may have already noticed the letter and you may have already read it, but somebody will entertain a motion to fill the seat if you're ready for that or we're just making us aware. What are your thoughts? You might be ready today.
I'm not ready.
I'm not ready.
Alright.
Or this, uh, usually we seek somebody, we, we just put out, let people.
So by making it known today, we're making you know, uh, folks aware that there is an open seat on the industrial development board. And we'd certainly entertain submissions of interest from, from, uh, citizens that may have an interest in that. We won't take action on. Sorry, I don't know. We'll have that for the next meeting.
Yes, we will.
Sorry, good question. Uh, that's the only one that's resigning right now. Uh, next, uh, comments from the staff or from our attorney, others.
I'll say Rick Clifton and Alan Miller's on the note down there, so I don't know if any of them, that would be part of it or?
It's, it's significant to Rick. I don't know if he's on the board. I think it's just his office that interacts with it. Alan, Alan Miller likely is on it as chair, I don't know. Yeah. Staff?
Greg, I'm waiting on the, uh, um, the timber crews since the, uh. The investment company opted to, to donate the, the timber with that. In order to the appraisal to the federal highway administration's right of way acquisition, I've gotta get into a timber value in the assessment, although they're giving it to us. I gotta make a fair market value with that, so we're waiting on that. Um, we're in the T Bridge, Fred Worley, Berry Road, Chester Road, Annie Lee, Welcome Church, Vera Cruz. All that area, we're, we're up there, um, cutting right now with our right of way machine. And as soon as it dries out enough, we're gonna start working those roads up as well. We're stockpiling material up there now to put on T Bridge and some of those roads for our FEMA, roads up that way, so.
Very good. Any others? If there is nothing else, uh, Mayor, thank y'all again for coming, being with us today and we'll consider that at the next, uh, next meeting, I suppose. A motion to adjourn would be in order. Thank you, Mr. Adams.